Call the Public Works Committee, or real call please.
Alderman Shaki.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
Okay, I need a motion approval minutes November 12, 2009, so move.
Second.
Any corrections, anything changed in this? All in favor? All right.
Fine.
Hold. Motion carries. Uh, the next item on our agenda, and this is one item that we've been waiting for a while, it's finally on our daisies, is a treatment plant expansion. A Smith Engineering, um, what's the new company now too?
Walter, our SEC group and HR three.
Okay. So they do have their presentation, so we will let them go through their presentation. Just for you guys to know, since we've taken some minutes, could you just give your name and what company you're with, or we could get that in the minutes?
Who do you know, sir? Do I have Walter E. Deutschler?
Ed Coggan with Smith Engineering.
Mark Holm with Walter E. Deutschler Associates.
Okay, and we know the other two. All right, so I would let them go through the presentation, and then we will open it up to questions. Okay, so if you want to start your presentation, go ahead, and then at the end we'll open up for questions.
All right, we appreciate this opportunity to present what we've come up with during this feasibility study. What we're doing here is kind of a workshop presentation where we've gone through some of the initial stages of the feasibility study, looked at our loads coming in, and looked at some alternatives, and we're coming up and presenting the alternatives to you, and we have a recommended one that we'd like to, you know, consider, but we want to get all, everybody's input, so we can go forward and finish up the feasibility study. Once we get the input in some direction from the committee, then we'll be able to wrap this up. The feasibility study that we were contracted for was to look at upgrading to wastewater treatment plants at their current locations within their current kind of limits or property boundaries. That would be the north plant, it's up there on Irving Park Road, bounded to the west by the lumberyard, to the east by the creek, to the north by the railroad tracks, and by Irving Park Road, and the south plant, which is in the middle of the golf course. Those were the two areas that we were looking at as part of the feasibility study. Presentation itself, I'll give you a little, you know, the format of what we're going to be doing, it's going to start out with some background information, looking at how we got to where we are with the flows, the loading, and then we're going to look at some alternative technologies and alternative site arrangements, and combine those into some specific alternatives that could be constructed, along with cost estimates for those, and then we're going to go in and look at recommended alternatives, then we'll have questions and answers at that time, so that we can answer any of your questions you have on the process, how we got to where we are, and what we're looking at recommending, and then some direction on completing the feasibility study, you know, where we want to go from here to wrap this up. First step in the process was determining what was the capacity that we need to look at for the wastewater plant. Initially, it was estimated at a five MGD capacity was what we were tasked with looking at designing for. The first step of this process was really looking at the CMAP population projections out to 2030, and then also the Thorndale redevelopment, which is going to be the expansion that we're really looking at. Those were the two main components for the expansion of it, and what we're looking at, or we came up with on here, is some capacities at the north wastewater treatment plant of going from 1.97 MGD up to 3.47 MGD. All of the expansion from the Thorndale corridor and for the CMAP projected expansion would occur at the north plant. Included in that is about a .7 MGD for the Thorndale corridor, that was based on the planning study, that was what they would be adding to your flows. Looking about a .12 MGD expansion based on the CMAP population projections. And we also have excess capacity built in here, a little reserve capacity of 25%, so that you won't run into at 2030, if the expansion, or the growth occurs like it's planned to, have to expand at that time, and that's adding another .7 MGD to this. So built into these numbers is some excess capacity above and beyond what the, uh, the population projections say is needed. That's at the north plant. At the south plant, we're actually looking at something that's been done in the past there, we're actually looking at derating that plant down to a little bit more than what the current flows are coming in. Currently, that plant's seeing approximately .8, .82 MGD is what it's seeing for its average daily flow, and it's rated now at 1.13. At 1.13, it's what NP, or IEPA would consider a major discharger on the NPDS permit. We're looking at derating the plant to get it down to below the one MGD capacity, so that the permit conditions that'll be imposed on that plant in the future won't be as restrictive as a major discharger would be, like your north plant. That .96 MGD capacity still has extra flow available if any expansion does occur. You won't be on the critical review list or restricted list for flows going to there if we maintain this capacity with the current dry weather flows that are going into that plant. The only thing that really needs to be improved at the south plant would be upgrading the raw water pumps to a little higher capacity for peak flow conditions. The current pumps are a little underrated for the peak flow that the plant's currently rated at, and would still be rated at under this reduction in flows. Other than that, all the operations at the plant are, you know, they're older, but they're still very effective, the plant works well. It's really underloaded for how it was designed, so this type of plant operates very well under those conditions. So the only other improvements would really just be replacing of equipment as needed as it's breaking down, just a typical O&M replacement schedule. The planning report, the feasibility study report we've been working on, it's really got four main components to it. The first was evaluating the existing facilities and looking at what improvements would be needed to those for current flows and how things are working, also looking at our forecast growth, and as we discussed that with the Thorndale corridor expansion and the CMAP projections for 2030. Also, the, the other two main things are to identify future regulatory constraints, trying to predict what IEPA is going to require on your next permit that's being issued and the ones after that. And we'll go into some more detail as we get into the technical aspects of what we're proposing here, of what those new permit conditions might be. But really, we're anticipating a phosphorus limit being imposed, and potentially in the future, a total nitrogen limit being proposed. That would be above and beyond what's currently, your permit conditions are. We're also looking at the BOD and TSS limits to be cut in half from where you are now. That is the trend that IEPA has been going to, especially at the north plant. South plant, because it will no longer be a major discharger, hopefully will be immune to these permit increases, but there's still a possibility of some, you know, future restrict, or further restrictions on those. And then based on that, we want to identify the improvements that are required at the two plants to satisfy these conditions. Some of the key decisions for looking at the wastewater plant expansions are the, at north plant, pretty much the discussions on the south plant, we've pretty much covered everything that we wanted to on that in the presentation here, it's, we really don't recommend any improvements being made there other than raw water stations. So we're now, we're going to focus on what we're recommending for the north plant. So the, the two main decisions for the north wastewater treatment plant expansion are the site layout alternatives, where we can physically put some of the new components on site, and what existing structures may have to be moved or sacrificed, or, you know, something done with them, because the site itself is fairly small, but everything that we need to do there can fit at the plant. Also, we're looking at the treatment technologies, you know, the different ones that are out there, we've narrowed it down to a couple that we've focused on for these final presentations, but we have evaluated a number of other alternatives that were eliminated for various reasons. Some of the implementation considerations for expanding at the, the north plant site are the footprint itself of the site and of all the structures we need to put on it. Aesthetics are another big concern there, this is right on Irving Park Road gateway into the community, you really don't want something there that, you know, is not attractive, so aesthetics can play a big part of it. But as usual, aesthetics cost money usually to implement at a plant like this. Constructability is a main concern, can we physically build these components where they're located on the site, in addition, in relation to the existing structures, and also issues dealing with Salt Creek itself. And then the treatment capability, we're looking at the three technologies, really it's two technologies, one with an additional item, the first is the conventional activated sludge. That's the technology currently employed at the plant, so we're looking at expanding the capacity using the existing technology, and there's some advantages for doing that in that, you know, the, the operators know how to run that type of plant. It's a very good plant, it's got a proven history that it works, it's been around for a long time. Also, we're looking at, the next one is for adding tertiary filtration to that, and we'll go into some of the benefits of adding that to it. The third one we're looking at is membrane bioreactor, and that's going to be a whole set of alternatives and site layouts that incorporate an MBR facility. And MBR plants are, it's a state-of-the-art technology, it's a fairly new one, it's got some good benefits, it's also very costly, so those are some of the trade-offs for it. Some of the other considerations we have to, are looking at here is the treatment reliability, are these processes reliable, can we depend on them, and can we reduce your risk of any excursions, or overflows, or any other permit conditions? And then the last one is really probably the most important one for most places, the capital and O&M cost, you know, what's it cost to do this, and can you afford it, and what impact would it have on your operations? So Mark's going to go into more detail in the site layouts and the different technologies.
Thanks, Ed. Really comes down to your existing site and the constraints on your site, and we have two general alternatives. One of those alternatives is to relocate the Veterans Memorial Park, and the second alternative is to relocate the public works facility, and we refer to those as alternative A and alternative B. Relocation of one of those, those facilities will allow us more room for expansion to accommodate the future growth that's projected. Just to review the site for a moment, here's existing public works facility that's in the dashed square, and of course, the Veterans Memorial Park is in the dashed square on the south side of the, the site on Irving Park Road. As Ed mentioned, we looked at a number of alternatives and really distilled all those alternatives down into three with staff. The first one is a conventional activated sludge process, again, it's a traditional technology, it's what the existing plant currently uses. We're going to tweak it a little bit so we can achieve nutrient removal, phosphorus removal, as well as total nitrogen removal. It produces what we call an adequate water quality, it'll meet the permit requirements, it has the lowest cost to, to construct as well as operate. As an enhancement to alternative two is conventional activated sludge plus tertiary filtration. So after the, the settling stage in a conventional activated sludge process, instead of going directly to a disinfection stage, you have a filtration stage, so you're removing what might overflow from the clarifier, those particulate, particulate matter, suspended solids, particulate phosphorus, and you're removing that through a filtration process. So your effluent quality is much better, and it's also a, a very nice process to have in place when your plant is subject to a lot of wet weather flows, because those wet weather flows, you know, impact the plant, and you can imagine a slug of flow coming through the plant, if you have filtration, the reliability of the process is much better. You're going to be able to meet your, your effluent qualit, quality requirements much easier. As a third alternative, we looked at a membrane bioreactor. This is kind of a cutting-edge technology. Instead of using final clarifiers, those circular tanks to, to settle the solids, what you use is a membrane, and, and you pull the clean water through the membrane while you're leaving the sludge behind. It is the latest technology, it is kind of a smaller footprint technology, so we wanted to evaluate that closely given the site constraints. But it also has the highest cost to operate and maintain, so not, not only are you pumping the water through the treatment plant, but you're also pulling the water through the membrane, so you have higher power costs and higher capital costs. So to recap, alternative one and two, the liquid unit processes include six-millimeter screening to protect the raw sewage pumps, there's grit removal, there's activated sludge to achieve biological nutrient removal, BNR, there's final clarification, and then alternative two includes a tertiary filtration step, and finally ultraviolet light for disinfection. And using UV will allow you to get rid of the chlorine that you're currently using on-site, so there's a, a benefit there as far as the community goes, because you're not holding gaseous chlorine on-site, so you don't have that risk any longer. Alternative three, the liquid unit processes are similar, you have six-millimeter screening, there's raw sewage pumping again, grit removal, there's an additional screening stage, that's one-millimeter screening to protect the membranes, you want to remove all the heavy debris from the, from the wastewater so you don't harm those membranes, and then there's activated sludge to achieve, again, nutrient removal, and then you have the liquid-solid separation process, which is the MBR, and finally a disinfection stage, which is ultraviolet disinfection. All three alternatives have a common solids handling, oops. There we go, I'm sorry, have a, a common solids handling process. You know, in a, any treatment plant process, you grow more bacteria than you need, it's just the way the process works, so you have to get rid of that bacteria. So we have a thickening stage, an aerobic digestion stage where you basically starve those bacteria, the extra bacteria that you grow to reduce their volume, and finally a de-watering stage, so you're de-watering, reducing the solids, reducing the liquid from the solids, so you have less to dispose of in a landfill or by land application. So all alternatives have the same solids train. So in terms of these three alternatives and their ability to meet effluent constraints, on the left side are some of the key parameters that are regulated by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. Biological oxygen demand, suspended solids, ammonia nitrogen, total phosphorus, and total nitrogen, and you see the different colored squares in that matrix. The orange square means that you don't have the capability of doing that right now, so your existing treatment plant doesn't have the ability to remove the nutrients, phosphorus, and total nitrogen. Alternative one, which is a conventional activated sludge process with an enhancement for biological nutrient removal, we refer to that process as A2O, will meet all the MPDS requirements that we project in the future. The new regulations that we project we're going to have to meet are a total phosphorus and a total nitrogen. Alternative two, which is the conventional process with the filters, will produce a better quality effluent in terms of CBOD, suspended solids, as well as total phosphorus, it will remove some particulate phosphorus also. And alternative three, by far, produces the best quality effluent, but again, at the, at the highest cost. So to recap our alternatives, we have two, two basic alternatives for the site, given the site constraints. One is to relocate the Veterans Memorial Park, the other alternative is to relocate the public works facility, and then each, under each one of those general alternatives, we have the three technology alternatives, conventional activated sludge, conventional activated sludge with filtration, and then the membrane bioreactor. Kind of show you one of the concepts where the public works facility is still maintained, but the Veterans Memorial Park is relocated, and this would involve three final clarifiers for the liquid-solid separation along Irving Park Road, and those clarifiers, we'd have to do something to make them more attractive, so you'd have to build a landscape berm of some sort around the clarifiers to kind of obscure them from folks traveling down Irving Park Road, if aesthetics are a concern. The cost related to that alternative is $26,419,000. With the addition of tertiary filters down in the, the lower right-hand corner there, the southeast corner of the site, the cost would be $32,803,000. And please note that these costs don't include the cost of relocating the park and, or relocating the public works facility. If the park is, is maintained and the public works facility is relocated, it's still the same unit processes throughout the whole site, they're just arranged in a little different form. You again would have those final clarifiers along Irving Park Road, and you may see, if, if you're ever driving by a treatment plant, you might see the domes, and there's a, there's a photo of a fiberglass dome at a, at a facility in, in Yorkville, Illinois, and you can have fiberglass dome, or you can have an aluminum dome, and those aluminum domes are at the city of Plano, Illinois. And so we'd want to do some landscaping along there too, but you would have these domes along Irving Park Road. And again, the cost associated with this alternative would be the same as alternative A, $26,419,000 without the filtration option. If you add the filtration option... There's the filters, the cost would be $32,803,000. And with that...
The next alternative we're looking at is the membrane bioreactor, the MBR alternative, and first one is consistent with what we looked at with conventional, the A3 is where we relocate the park but keep the public works building. It preserves the public work, and it does create some open space for some future use and poss, potential future expansion if additional capacity is needed at some point. This one does result in a little bit of extra room. Located in the front of the southern part would be the excess flow facilities and the raw water pump station, and then behind it would be the MBR facility itself. The construction cost for this one, like we mentioned earlier, the MBR alternative is more expensive, it's $44,394,000. The B3 alternative is the same unit processes that we looked at before, but it's keeping the park and losing the public works facility, so the public works facility would have to be relocated. One thing, in the alternative where we're relocating the public works facility, we've not included any of the cost for a new public works facility in these capital cost estimates we have here. This one, one of the nicer things about the MBR, like we mentioned before, is the aesthetics, and this is a rendering of an MBR facility that's going to be built in the near future down in Yorkville, and this is actually the backside of it, where the aeration tanks are, the concrete structures behind it, and then looking at a, a building. The front side of it can be made to look as, you know, any architectural style you'd like to see on it, it's pretty flexible what you can do with this. And again, the costs on this one are the same as the alternative where we were to relocate the park, it's $44,394,000. After looking at these from an engineering standpoint, we've come up with a recommended alternative, and this one, it isn't based on aesthetics, it's based on cost, and it would be the alternative B2, which is a conventional activated sludge plus tertiary filtration. This one, in one plant improvement, would give you the capability to meet all your future NPDS requirements that IEPA will impose at some point for the lowest capital cost, it also has some of the lowest operations and maintenance cost, and it is, you know, just an expansion of the same type of process that you're currently using. And some of the reasons why we recommend this one.
Yeah, we recommended this alternative for a number of reasons, it reduces the potential for suspended solids violations. Based on that matrix we showed before, it also provides for an enhanced BOD removal, so you're going to produce a very high-quality effluent. It also improves the reliability of UV disinfection, so now you have another process prior to the disinfection stage, so you have less suspended solids and less material going through the disinfection stage, so the UV will work better. It also improves phosphorus removal, there's some phosphorus, orthophosphate that's soluble, and there's some that's particulate. The tertiary filters will help to remove that particulate phosphorus. And as an environmentally friendly or, or green alternative, it reduces the pollutant loading to Salt Creek substantially, and it's also consistent with the goals of the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency and their total maximum daily load study on Salt Creek. So with that, we'll be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Joe Coles, Alderman Coles?
Years ago, we talked about a five MGD equivalent to a five, and the two figures I have, I got 4.43. I thought the expansion of this was supposed to go at, at least to five, we were worried about not having enough of capacity, and now you cut it down to 4.43, or 4.43. When it was, I thought we were supposed to originally have five capacity, 5.2, I believe, originally.
The first task that we had in our, the feasibility study was to evaluate the, the capacity requirements that the plant would need, and the five MGD capacity is what was thrown out, you know, when we started a year ago looking at this, is this is what the city thinks we need for this, but the first task was, let's verify what that number is. So the first thing, part of the study was, we looked at the, the population projections that CMAP has for the community, and they don't have a lot of projected growth occurring within your current boundaries. Then the Thorndale redevelopment study was being done earlier this year, they came up with a recommended alternative that was accepted, and that had square footage of different types of facilities that would be added. We took that square footage at typical usage rates and came up with the projected flows that would be coming into the plant. that would be coming into the plant. And so that five M G D number was reduced based on the results of the population studies that were done previously.
Okay, it's only projected. Suppose it gets higher, where are we going to put it?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Suppose the five goes up to six, where are we going to put it? And suppose there's a, suppose the Thorndale corridor gets really busy and there's five or six hotels up there that will be using the water, will be using the sewer system, and we run out of capacity, what are we supposed to do?
Well, that was kind of beyond the scope of what we were asked to evaluate as part of this study was if...
I'm just asking a question.
Right. And that is a good question. What if you have to have more capacity? And that is one of the benefits of the M B R alternative, in that you do have additional space within your current footprint for extra capacity. Another alternative to consider, and it's one that we had first looked at, but we're instructed, you know, we're staying within our property boundaries that we have now, is there is some land available to the west of your North Plant, the lumberyard. And it might be a better use of that land to expand your wastewater plant onto. And if that's the case, there is room for additional capacity at the combined site. But again, that was, you know, outside of the scope of what we were asked to look at. But that is, that would be the best way to handle it.
Because you can never tell what's going to happen.
Right.
Four, five years from now.
And that would be a nice problem to have, is needing to provide six M G D capacity.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Mark, who benefits from our water being purified? I know it's going into the Salt Creek, but what community would be drinking it next?
I don't believe there are any communities that are taking water from Salt Creek to use as potable water supply source. However, you know, there's a number of fish and such that are in the creek. And that total maximum daily load study that was performed is basically to enhance the aesthetics and the quality of the water in the creek for wildlife. And just to make it a better, better resource for all the communities up and down the creek. But anyone downstream would benefit.
Thank you.
Sure.
Going back to the five million gallons per day and whatnot, when you guys were telling what was needed, you said .7 on Thorndale, 1.2 C M A P, and then you figured a .7 for extra.
.12.
.12, right. So that's basically 2.6, right? So if we're going to 4.43 and you're figuring 2.6, we're at 1.83. 1.2 is for the whole city. When you said 1.2, that wasn't, was the 1.2 extra?
0.12.
Oh, 0.
0.12.
I got 1.2, okay.
Was C M A P's projected expansion?
Okay.
Not considering the Thorndale corridor?
Okay.
Yeah, that's an approximate number, but yeah, that's what, the C M A P's 2030.
I wrote the wrong number. My mistake. As far as, let's say this is 4.43. I know one, I don't know who it was, was saying, well, you can raise the tanks, whatnot, get more storage. Is that, would that bring it up to the five?
We looked at, you know, those considerations, and hydraulically, because of the elevations of the current structures, we really couldn't do that. When we, one of the things we did was a topographic survey of the plant, was one of the earlier tasks in here. And we got detailed elevations on all of the structures and doing a hydraulic profile through the plant, could see what we could and couldn't do and how we could arrange the components. One of the things we didn't present to keep the presentation, you know, short within the timeframe that we had for looking at it, we've got, where it's just boxes on the site plans now, we actually have preliminary designs for all of these structures to make sure that if we're saying we can put it in here, that it can fit there. So for all of these, the different components here, we've gone through and, you know, done preliminary designs. We've got the, those plans on the board here if we want to take a look at any of those, just to see where things can fit. But based on that, we're really not able to increase the sidewall depth on the tanks that are there to get extra capacity. We are getting our extra capacity by adding additional aeration basins to what's there and then modifying the flow rates through them. And that's where the alternative, if we have to go to even more capacity, we could look at moving some of the unit processes over to the, if the lumberyard became available, if you could, you know, expand the boundaries a little bit. There's some unit processes we could move over there that aren't part of the hydraulic grade of the water flow through. That would be the influent pump station that can go over there and the excess flow facility, and also the solids handling component. If we move those, we have more room for expansion as far as additional aeration capacity and room for clarifiers on the, you know, the combined sites.
I got a question on those, on the recommended alternative. When those tanks are up in the front by Irving Park, how close are they to Irving Park, just out of curiosity? I mean, they look, is it 50 feet, 200 feet, 100 feet?
They're about the same distance off the road as the memorial park is itself, the plaza in the center of the park. You look on the site plan, you can see, you know, Irving Park is that line at the edge, is the edge of Irving Park Road. So they're relatively close.
And when you said aesthetics, are you talking about putting a berm there in front of those as well, or?
For this configuration, an earth berm wouldn't fit, but a decorative wall, a screening wall, would be an appropriate alternative for this. In fact, it could even be something in...